Six thirty. Reminder to everyone who's here, the reading is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of each other as you speak, as well as as you're listening to someone else speaking. Is there anyone here for open session? Okay. Katie, we'll go with the communications announcements.
All right, so we got a lot of stuff coming up. Tomorrow night is Castel Night at the library, which is apparently completely booked. They have a waiting list, so if you're really interested. It's from five thirty to seven thirty. Then they also have the Hubbard's, nope, sorry. The Senior Center has a book club on five twenty-two, which is what, Thursday this week? In the morning, I want to say it's ten AM, I didn't write that time down, my apologies. I want to say it's ten or eleven.
Five twenty-two?
Yes.
Wednesday.
Wednesday? Okay, Wednesday. I don't even know what day it is today.
Monday.
Maybe, I don't know, I show up early for those things. Memorial Day is May twenty-seventh for the parade at eleven AM for step-off time, noonish? Well, around noon, as soon as the parade gets to the town common, they'll have a ceremony, which is around noon. And then afterwards, over here at the Senior Center, the, I want to say Friends, somebody is gonna be doing Ice Cream Sundays. So, you know, it's all a good day. So, come on down. If you're not marching in the parade, come on down, watch the parade. There's lots of people, it's always a good day, and they, the Memorial Day Committee always does a good ceremony on the common, so I would highly recommend coming down. On May thirtieth, there's a West African drum workshop at the Hubbardston Library from six to seven PM. I do think you need to kind of let them know you're coming, but it's not like a limited quantity of people, to my knowledge. Just in case you haven't noticed, we're going to have a town meeting coming up soon on June fourth at seven PM. That is at the Hubbardston Center School Gym. The seniors are having a cellphone and laptop help day on June fifth from ten to noon at the Senior Center. So if you have issues, trying to figure out how to link your cellphone to your car, or your laptop is just showing stupid stuff and you can't figure it out, you can come on down, they've got people to help you out. The Hubbardston Fair is June eighth from nine to two, the rain date of the ninth, at the Rec Field. Town election is June eleventh at seven AM to eight PM at the Hubbardston Center School Gym. And then also, just in case anyone's interested, the seniors have a walking club on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Nine thirty, they meet here at the Senior Center, and they walk wherever they want to walk, I don't know where they go. But they have a walking club, so they're, it's open to all, you don't have to be a senior, you can come on down and meet some new people if you have the days off on Tuesdays and Thursdays at nine thirty AM. That's all I got.
That's all.
That's it.
Any other announcements or reports or questions from anyone? Okay, then we will move to the Country Hand Scholarship recognition. And before the award, I would like to say a few words in regards to the scholarship and this year's recipients. For those who don't know what the Country Hand Scholarship is, or where it all came about, the founder and owner of the Country Hand business, George Bass, who has recently passed away this year, before he, right after he retired and turned his business over to the people that are running it now, George put a certain amount of money away with the intent that it, the interests et cetera be used for scholarships for Hubbardston residents, they'd have to have lived here for three years, and Hubbardston students. And each year, initially when I got on the board eleven years ago, we only gave one, which was the, because the total amount that we are able to have is a thousand dollars, and we gave one, and what made us change is simply the same things, and it's the same thing I will mention again, the quality of the students that were applying for it, et cetera. We wanted to try to spread it out if we could, because we hated saying no to every, except one person. And granted, college is certainly not cheap, and it wasn't then, and it certainly isn't now. So this obviously is not a lot of money, but it was a great thing that George did for the town and for these people, so that about my fourth year on the board is rough, as I recall roughly when we decided that we would give two scholarships, five hundred each. And that's how it all came about. And in regards to the quality of the kids that have applied, I was, last year I was overwhelmed, and this year equally so. We had six applicants, and I can assure you that the committee members, and that includes me, I've been on it ever since I've been on the board, we've read every single application, and the essays are just absolutely incredible. When you, the way they've expressed themselves, et cetera. I'm very impressed, both as the Select Board Chairman and also as a retired teacher, as I read these things, it's just unbelievable. And that the two people that we chose for this year equally are impressive. One could not be here tonight because he is working, my understanding. So I'll give you a little bit of background on him, and then we do have the other recipient here, and we will be making a presentation after I give a little background on her. The first person we were going to award the five hundred dollars was Michael Tobin. He'll be going to Brown University. He is the, he has the top GPA in his class. He belongs in the National Honor Society. His goal is to be a successful entrepreneur, engineer, and philanthropist. These are his own words. He's into soccer, wrestling, and weightlifting. The experiences that he's had and the work and the things that he does on his own, you wonder what, when did the day get longer than twenty-four hours? So, very, very impressive. And then we come to the young lady who's with us tonight, Kylie Casey. And Kylie is no slouch either. Her GPA is four point five seven, ever since she's been in middle school, she's had high honors, all the way through high school. Just as a starting point. She'll be going to Worcester University, Worcester State University. She also is in the National Honor Society. In fact, with the National Honor Society, she was the tutor coordinator. She was captain of the varsity field hockey and varsity golf team. She wants a minor in, major, excuse me, in computer science and minor in criminal justice. And her goal, again her words, is to help people feel safe, remain safe in cyber world, unquote. So, they are truly deserving of the recognition that we are going to be able to give them. So Kylie, if you would come up, we're gonna have a presentation up here. I'm filling in for the Country Hand as well, because the representative couldn't. And if you guys want a picture.
Thanks.
And you wouldn't have been able to picture first, okay, but. Come on over here, Kylie. On behalf of the Country Hand and the Select Board.
Can the rest of the board join them?
Join us, I'll call them.
As long as you get in the rating.
Not Katie, no.
Yeah, I know, not me. Really? I'm gonna be right next to your kid, so how about that?
Hold up.
Pick a time.
You're gonna come join me?
Well, I'm just trying to even it out.
Even it out a little bit?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you, guys.
Good luck in school.
Thank you.
You guys, thank you.
Katie definitely couldn't.
You know, you need to go.
That's it.
He's giving me a hard time. Just for anybody that cares, Troy and I went to school together, so it's okay. I give him just as much of a hassle as he gives me.
It is my son's soccer teacher.
Yeah.
Kylie.
Yes. Huh?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we went to, we were in the same house. Uh-oh.
What a hand raised. Hmm? Mike?
Mr. Chair, Mike Stoff, five Lombard Road. Did Mr. Tobin happen to mention which college he'd be going to?
Yeah, I thought I said.
Brown.
Brown University, I said so.
Yeah.
I missed that, thank you.
Brown University. I'm sure he had many choices, based on his record, he's not incredible, very impressive. Okay, now, we will move to the public tree hearing. At which point, I'd like to invite up Eric Ethicam Morris.
Yes.
Please join us, and I'll turn it over to you for the presentation, and then just take questions and answers.
All right, so National Grid is proposing to remove a number of trees for their Hazard Tree Program. Basically, it's an enhanced hazard tree mitigation that targets any dead dying disease trees, high risk to the utility infrastructure. And obviously, there's no cost to the town, because it's, National Grid is, performs all their remotes and whatnot, so.
Hold enough for questions, or?
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? That's you.
That's me?
Yeah.
Yes. Both myself and Robert.
Yeah, so hi, I'm Robert Huddick, and Certified Arborist, working for National Grid. One of, some of the people who put this list together, like Eric said, we went through kind of some certain roads that serve a lot of customers, that identify trees that are problems, that we think will likely involve an outage in the next two years. And we have this list of trees, it's fifty-nine to remove and eight to prune. And this is along the roadside that we think are, that are town-owned trees, where we would, we are requesting permission to do that work. That's my summary.
You said fifty-nine to be removed, and what was the other?
And eight to prune.
Eight.
And some of the road, the roads are New Westminster Road, Underwood Road, Gardner Road, Pitcherville Road, Morgan Road, High Street, Main Street, and Williamsville Road. Those are pretty spread out. I mean, I and others are here to, you know, answer any questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, you've already started this work, correct?
No, we've just went out, identified the trees.
So, the line work being done on New Westminster's got nothing to do with what you're doing?
Yeah, you know, National Grid has a lot of programs running parallel often.
Right.
That is, this is like maintenance of work that's, the lines that are already there, trying to, you know, maintain them. We're not making any changes, yeah, unrelated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's some overlap, though, you are right yet. The roads are.
A majority of the road is being done.
We, yeah, we started this, and then that Capitol project got greenlit, but, so yeah, there is overlap. But Brian had that part, so.
Yeah, okay, so that's part of the six oh nine W one, which runs from the border of Westminster all the way down to.
Brigham.
Yeah, to Brigham and Evergreen. And what they're doing there is it's new construction, so they're replacing the old poles with taller poles. They're also going to be configuring it in a Hendrix, so you notice some of the cables are twisted and have like a metal fixture on them. They're changing all of the poles that are there existing to that as well, and that allows it to kind of take a little bit more tension, and so smaller branches that fall on the lines are less likely to cause damage. But they have taken that portion of work from the Hubbardston section that I did for the six oh nine W one. They'll be responsible for removing it, but I'm still here as the representative, as who did the inspection of the trees.
So how many trees are on New Westminster that are gonna be gone?
It is, here, sixteen trees along New Westminster Road.
Are they marked?
All marked with a, yes, they all have a red tag vertically stapled onto the tree, about four feet up.
So can I ask you, what about High Street?
High Street was my coworker here. It's two separate circuits that we combined into one, because they're both in the town of Hubbardston. That is the six oh two W two, so.
So I looked at High Street, and.
How many are slated for removal?
Eight town trees.
Okay.
Please save this time strictly for questions. If you are in opposition, you will be given the time to speak momentarily.
Eight town trees on that street.
I have a question. Do, did you guys go through the entire town, or are you just going through specific roads?
Certain roads, or those roads that I named. So it's the roads that, certain circuits, so coming out of a substation, and then parts of the circuit that have high enough customer count, you know, so we're not going down people's driveways or a small side street.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah. So if power goes out here, a couple hundred people.
Yeah, so I have a follow-up question, because there's still, like, you guys go out and tag the trees. There's still trees on, like, other roads that still haven't been taken down, that were tagged, like, a couple of years ago. And, yeah, that they need a crane, and then the crane guy got sick, so he couldn't, they rescheduled it.
I think that was the previous tree ward, that tagged those, Jeff?
I, no, it was National Grid. There was one, there's a big one right down by my street, down by my house, that is dead, and it's been tagged. There was, they had to get a detail, and I guess the crane, the guy that was, was sick, and they rescheduled it, but then something else happened, and then, nothing for a few years, so I'm just waiting for that to come down, because it is huge and dead.
Yeah, what's the name of that?
Ragged Hill. Ragged, R-A-G-G-E-D, Hill Road. What number is your?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. It's, it is tagged. It's been tagged, it's been dead for years. They took down a bunch of others, but they just never got to that one, because it was so massive.
Like I said, we have, National Grid is different.
Yeah, I know.
Different things, so like, I don't know exactly what it was.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, you guys do this, and it comes back, like, to a couple of years, and I'm not playing, you know, it's nobody's specific fault, but it, like, just kind of gets left to linger. They get put on these lists to be cut down, and the town can't afford to do it, that's why you guys go out and do it, so, before it turns into a huge thing.
Yeah, I'll just, as tree warden, I have zero budget to do.
I know, I'm well aware.
Very frustrating.
I'm well aware, and it's very unfortunate that that's the way it is.
So when they cut these trees to remove them, do they go to the root? Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you speak up and identify who you are, please?
Your name for the record.
Sharon Hatch, five High Street, I apologize. When you do remove these trees, do you take it all, or do you just cut it and you leave a stump?
We cut the trees as low as we can, so we don't grind stumps.
Okay.
So close to grades, typically maybe a few inches, if there's a big rock or something like that. You know, as low as they can get, is what we do.
I don't, I don't know who that is.
Whitney.
Whitney Freiberg, seven High Street, and I just wanted to ask, what's the criteria between, or determination between pruning it and taking it down? Is it the age of the tree, is it the height of the tree? What, what is put into that thought that determines whether or the other?
Yeah, so I think primarily, we don't want to prune a tree and leave it in a higher-risk state than before we came. So, you know, you could, trees can oftentimes heal, but if it's too large of a branch, and you just do a prune cut on it, it's gonna have a harder time healing. The tree is already under some kind of stress. Especially if it, you know, if it's in a place where what you're leaving might, you know, someone might, if it's near a sidewalk or someone's yard, you wouldn't want to leave a hazard worse off than what you're saying.
Not only do you have this, but.
I just need to finish from my earlier question, come here, I had a cutoff.
Sorry.
That's all, no, it wasn't you. Wasn't anybody, I'm just, I'm slow. So the only question I have is prior to this work on New Westminster, I saw tagged trees. I don't see tagged trees anymore. So has the work been done, or is it on the opposite side of the street?
Yeah, so, as I said, I passed it off to the district forester and her.
Identify yourself for the record.
Brian Rodriguez, National Grid, Certified Arborist. So, several months ago, we went through and we tagged them. They, like I said, had that vertical red tape on it. Just last week, because of this Capitol project, there were some trees that we identified within that same area that the Capitol project was doing. And so when I pass it off to Bridget, who is, who works directly for Brandy, who is the Central Mass District Forester out of Worcester, I believe her plan was to remove the red tags and replace them with the two blue tags, which is the format that she had been tagging trees for the rest of the Capitol project. So for Hazard Tree, we use a red ribbon, and some other programs use different ribbons, and because they're taking it over and they want to identify those trees as part of their project, they're gonna replace them with the two blue tags.
Okay, so back to, how many trees are left of New Westminster that need to come down?
I can only speak to the ones that have to do with the Hazard Tree Program.
That's all I'm asking about?
Yep, that was the fifteen.
Fifteen?
Sixteen total trees. And like I said, anything additionally that happens down further towards Evergreen, I think it's Muskogee Ave, the intersection of Muskogee.
So that's why I asked.
Yep, so right there is when I was actually inspecting with my coworker, and we had noticed that we were running into the Capitol job, and so that's when we were given, you know, the go-ahead to stop our inspections there. So basically, from where New Westminster starts to Muskogee is where those sixteen trees would exist, and then from there on would be whatever the Capitol work.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, so I got a follow-up to that, so. New Westminster to Muskogee. New Westminster being the town line between Westminster and Hubbardston.
Yes.
So New Westminster coming uptown towards Muskogee is still the project you're working on?
Yes, so technically, that, that area is also a part of the Capitol project, but we were not necessarily informed when we were making our assessments of the trees in that area. And when we found out that we had overlapping projects, that's when we kind of merged the two together. And so from the beginning of New Westminster to Muskogee, they took those trees that I had identified from that area, both private and town, so there are homeowners that we have permissioned other trees with that are just not along the town property, that are gonna be removed by that group as well.
Okay, and those are identified now by two ribbons?
Yes, I met with Bridget Tuesday of last week, so I believe she's in the process of changing those over. I know that she's doing a lot of work all around town.
Yeah, I haven't seen those ribbons either.
Okay. Yeah, I can definitely check in with her and, and just make sure that, you know, that at least there's a timeframe that they get tagged in that way that we're visible.
And the purpose, and the purpose of this is for new telephone poles, did I hear, somewhere?
So our project specifically is whenever a circuit falls within a certain reliability range, as far as outages, then we come in and we do a cleanup of dead, dying, diseased, anything with a defect. But this project that we passed that work on to, that we did our initial inspection of, is for the Capitol project, which is replacement of old poles. And I believe this specific set of poles is just raising the height of the wires, as well as the configuration of the wire.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I have a few. You go ahead.
Yeah, Seth Myers, one seventy, Williamsville Road. So just a question about clarification on what the trees are, I've seen some trees with, you know, red tags and blue tags, and just kind of curious about what the actual number is for the trees that need to come down versus those get pruned. And also, I noticed that, you know, if it's, what is it, blue tags for pruning, you know, if there's any way to maybe request reevaluation because of the, I know that the Massachusetts State Shade Tree Law does, really, it's, I think the, the purpose there is to increase or preserve the aesthetic quality of the town. Some of the trees that I have marked in front of my house, I don't think would really benefit from being pruned, per se. I think maybe if they were just cut entirely, that, you know, would be preferable. They're not leaving much to the, left to be desired aesthetically. And so if they need to be pruned, if it's possible to just take the whole tree, see if that's maybe a possibility versus just trying to prune something that's already really kind of scruffy looking.
What address word did you say?
Oh, one seventy, Williamsville Road. There are two or three cherry trees in particular that I'm thinking of that are really kind of awkwardly placed, and, and I'm not sure what pruning would do for it.
Did your trees have one of these, the printout postings they put to it, you know, right?
They do not, no, it's just the blue tags on most of them.
Yeah, so let's connect into this, I've done a lot of these hearings and things, but there's this unfortunate overlap happening right now between this Capitol work and the maintenance work that we here are a part of. So, yeah, those are not part of this, this hearing. I'm happy to, like, get your number, or give you my card, and we can connect you two. I think they are, for that part of the road, going from that far down, because we didn't go that far down Williamsville Road, they probably haven't even started getting to permissioning yet or anything like that. And those, those trees very well might be removed.
Yeah, those.
The blue, blue down there is not necessarily the same as.
Yeah, that was part of my, my confusion, I guess, I just wanted some clarification to see if it's, there's clearly multiple projects. Which is great, I'm glad you guys are maintaining, you know, trying to keep up the reliability of service, but just like to get some more information, and hopefully we can, we can work on, you know, figure out what's going on, so thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so the tree is that, if you see a tree with the white posting for this hearing, and a blue tag on that, and that's the one that is pruned.
Okay.
Versus, there's a lot of other blue tags out there that weren't there when I was, recently, you know, I was there as well. And, yeah, those might have other meanings, including removal tools.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, question, so, is brought to our attention by a resident and by the planning board chair, that there's five roads on here that are scenic roads in the town of Hubbardston, right? Williamsville, Pitcherville, Morgan High, Underwood. Has there been a hearing scheduled before planning board yet?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that, so, I should pull out some documents on my iPad in a moment if I need to. But, basically, you know, the scenic road regulations and rules really are about what to do when any work has to happen to the road itself, if there's any kind of changes to the road, the layout. Maybe you would also fall under if you're gonna be doing some major work, changing the lines, but seeing this is just maintenance for the already existing public infrastructure, you know, we're not adding anything new, we are exempt from the scenic roads regulation.
Do you know where the exemption lies?
Yeah, I can pull that, so I'll, I'll find some document of that, or this gentleman here also is a.
So, I'm Lance Wade, I'm a manager for National Grid for Central and Western Massachusetts and our Hazard Tree Mitigation Program. So I think to his point with scenic roads, so we're not, if we were removing healthy trees, that might be a different story. Like, if we were putting new poles in, but I think for hazard trees, which is what, all we're targeting here, I don't think they would fall under the scenic road rules to my, to my knowledge. Because hazard trees, they're a danger not just to the power lines, but they're also a danger to the public, to the road. But with that, you're supposed, you know, our tree crews, we try to tell them to not disturb stone walls as least as possible and keep the landscape as best you can, right, so it's following those rules.
To that point, of stone walls and everything else, if there is damage done, who does that end up falling into? Our lab, or do you folks repair it and pay for it all?
Well, we would, we would, the tree company would be responsible ultimately, but as far as where it goes first, it depends on, I guess, who they get a hold of first, right, that, you know, it could go to you first, could go to me first, could go to the tree company first, as far as who it goes to first, but we would do our best to, you know, we try to do our best to follow up with any type of complaints, and work with customers as best we can. We try to not, you know, tree work can be, you know, obviously it's dangerous, there's obstacles, but when these gentlemen or ladies are out inspecting these feeders, they're talking to the residents, and we also give the option, if people want the wood, they have the option of taking the wood. Some people love to obviously heat their homes with wood, so there's that option too, but we're also trying not to disturb, I mean, the tree crews are, that we have doing these projects. We go out, we do audits on their work, so we do check their work, we do safety visits on them, so we're, we're out there quite a bit.
Okay. I'm, can I do this first, because I'm kind of representing a citizen, because she couldn't be here tonight because she's out of town, but she did. but she did c- send us, uh, a lot of her concerns and I would like to represent her now as well as it, with certain questions that she brought up, uh, s- some we've addressed already. Um, let's start here, uh, has the town put out a request for proposals for the tree removal?
Not relevant, it's not relevant, it's not the town's work, it's National Grid's work, it's their dollar, their work, not ours.
So any bids, okay, that's, that's what you want to know, uh, so that's not the town, um. She's asking how the abutters will be notified of this process, uh, once the process is going to be, you know, started. And then she also is asking what indemnities and escrows will be offered to abutters for any damage done to their properties? And, um, she mentioned scenic laws on Williamsville Road, anywhere else. Um, can you deal, can you tell me about that? Any indemnities or escrows that will be offered?
I don't, not to my knowledge that we have any that, uh, escrow. Obviously, like, we, we hold our, we hold our tree contractors responsible, right? There, you know, situations like that, there's stone walls or obstacles, that's, sometimes if we can't do it, or, you know, then we'll use cranes, right, if there's obstacles, we've used cranes a lot, 'cause they can lift, lift wood over everything and not, you know, you're holding, you know, when you, you have basically someone, you're tying a piece of huge wood to the crane and then you're having someone cut it and they can swing it up over. So sometimes if we have to do that, if there's concerns in certain areas, that's what we'll do. Sometimes if there's septic tanks or, we run into all the propane tanks, we run into a lot of obstacles in our, you know, with our work that's being done.
So this was a concern of hers too, so crane will be used?
Could be, it depends on the situation, we'd have to assess, you know, every, every, every setup is different, the circumstances could be different.
Um, will the town require, uh, is, are her questions, a performance bond and evidence of insurance of the tree service? Guarantee indemnity or escrow from National Grid?
They're not working for the town.
Okay, they're not working for the town, so that's a no.
So in the past, if someone has sustained damage on their property after National Grid has hired the third-party contractor to come in and remove the tree, how has that been handled?
So we do, we do, National Grid does have a claims department. Sometimes customers will call our claims department, which usually then will go to the forestry supervisor or it could end up in my lap. And we go out and we review the site and interview, you know, the customer, obviously, try to get both sides of the story. We look at the paperwork that was, was signed, 'cause sometimes there could be, you have to determine whether it was a town tree or privately owned tree or sometimes mass DOT, right, if we're on a mass DOT road, then a mass DOT tree. So you have to, every situation's different, but we, we address the claims as they come.
What does the ownership of the tree have to do with anything if you're taking the responsibility to remove it?
Well, if you're talking claims, right, so, um, so sometimes customers, like if you, if you wanna request proof of insurance, we can also have the tree company provide that too, if it makes this particular customer more, is that what it sounds like? Is they want proof of insurance, I could be wrong, depends on how you interpret that, there's-
Well, I think the concern is, and I think other residents will share it too, right, is sometimes we have these very large trees, right? And they're there and they've been there forever for a reason. Not just 'cause no one wanted to take them down, but there's been hurdles or, you know, uh, lack of cranes or operators of cranes or cost or whatever it may be. So they're just concerned that, you know, if something goes awry in the removal of the tree, that they know what to do and where to go from that point.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll go out with part, so the trees that are marked right now that we've received, so tonight we're obviously here, receive permission for the town-owned trees. So, you know, um, Robert and Brian have been wo- working on the, um, private trees as well. So we can't remove any trees without permission. So then, once we have everything permissioned, then we'll assign a tree company to these circuits to do the work. And they, what they'll do is the ones that we get permission for, they will spray paint. They will spray paint the ones that we actually received permission for, so there's no conflict on removing trees that we have not received permission for. And any trees that we cannot re- reach with buckets or perform the work safely, then that's when we line up crane, cranes to come in later to handle those specific trees. It sounds like there was a couple of trees that were perhaps maybe missed, I'm not sure. Sometimes there's some backlog with cranes, there's only so many cranes around, there's only so many crane operators. But, um, I think, don't forget, one of the main reasons why we're doing this project, so what they're working on is the three-phase backbones that really affect the majority of the residents in the long run. Even though we're not doing all the side roads, but this is your backbone. So if you lose these backbones, you lose everything. And we, you know, as you know, we've had, the past couple winters, uh, we've had some heavier, uh, uh, snow and ice, right? And that's what kinda drove us to look at these feeders, the reliability numbers went down. I think it was, uh, not this past, well, this past, um, April, we, I don't know if you had it up here, there was some heavy snow for a couple days and a couple years ago in March, a couple Marches were pretty bad and-
Where the wind blew.
Heavy wind, yeah.
Thirty-one inches, yeah, we had a little bit.
We had a little bit of snow up here.
Actually, right.
Lost power and it had sun blown off my house.
So that's the main-
Beginning of April, right?
Yeah, April.
So that's the main purpose of this, is to try to make the, that, those main backbones a lot more reliable.
Could you address a little bit what y- your process is for the, uh, awarding to, for the tree service?
So we have like, on this, um, EHTM, what we call Enhanced Hazard Treatment Inigation Program, we have like four different vendors right now. So it's Stanley Tree, Northern Tree, Lewis Tree, um, yeah, what's that?
Nelson.
A Nelson Tree. So they're, they're all working across the state of Massachusetts and, and the towns and cities that we serve. So at, so as one, you know, they're all, right now, they're all working. So as, as one finishes up, then we choose which is the next one. And sometimes it could be just where they are located, you know, there's a lot of them, unfortunately, that, you know, have to travel and work Monday through Thursday and have to hotel it. But sometimes if there's a local group that lives closer, you know, we, we try to pick, you know, who we think's the best fit. Um, but there's no exact, to your ans- there's no exa- but there's, you know, four, four, five, six pods of crews that we have across the state. So as they finish, then we give them another, another project.
I still have questions, okay, let me do that and I will get to you.
That's fine.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry.
That's okay, hopefully that answers that question.
Okay, um, let's see.
I have one comment on the stone walls, also just, um, so you can have a big tree, you got, we have a forty-five inch, it's a very diameter, very large tree with severe decay. Big, large limbs going out, dying back. If we cut that down, we try and take it down, not make a mess, or the tree's gonna fall out on its own and that stone wall's below it. The stone wall's gonna get damaged worse, most likely if gravity lets it fall or if we try to help gravity move it away from the stone wall. And we don't own the tree, so, you know, if we're not there and the stone wall gets damaged, then we're not gonna help, you know, get back together. Just another perspective, huh?
You made my next question, then, uh, who, uh, this, Eric, this might affect you too. Who will manage the project on the town's behalf, is it our tree warden?
It's not the town's project, it's not the town.
Well, overseeing, according to this overseeing, because she also wants to know who will manage the project on behalf of National Grid?
We have, we have a, well, we have a National Grid supervisor, um, right now that, his name is Luke Fisk, he could not make it tonight, but he, he's actually got promoted to another job, so we're looking to fill the job, but he's still in this role. Ultimately, he supervises, um, this group of consultants that we have that goes out and inspects these trees and tries to permission trees. So we do have a supervisor in charge of this group, who, uh, that supervisor falls under me.
When, when is the, uh, tree removal scheduled to begin?
Yeah, so I think it's, um, there's a lot of variables that go into this and things change, but looking at late summer to, through the fall to start. And I have to say also, this, this circuit runs from, uh, Westminster through Gardner to Hubbardston.
Late summer and fall?
Yeah, late summer, fall, right now.
But not winter?
Oh, it could, no, no, I have no guarantees on anything here, it could, it could be a year from now. I don't know what's gonna happen, like, a tree company could have an injury and you could have, we could have the worst storms we've ever had and everyone's working on storm restoration, so that's my estimate for you.
Uh, this question is related to all that too, she said, how will the abutters be notified when their trees are to be removed so that they can make arrangements to enter and exit their homes and relocate any items that might be in harm's way?
Yeah, uh, so, yep, so we're here for the town trees. We have also reached out to each individual property in order to, uh, a lot of times there's also private tree to get permission for private work. Um, or even if there's only town trees, we still reach out to make contact and check in with them to see that they're okay, uh, with the work happening. At that point in time, uh, if anyone would like to get notified, you know, under some kind of special such circumstances, then they let us know and make that happen. So it's something that happens, we know it's on the proper show.
Uh, she's questioning, um, when the project is near completion, um, is the town gonna be required for the removal of all wood, including logs, limbs, branches and wood chips?
So we, uh, so we haul the wood away unless somebody specifies that they actually want the wood. Uh, we do actually go through and, um, audit after, when they're getting close to permissioning. So, like, you know, we might point out, oh, you missed, uh, what's that log doing over there, right? We do go through and we do audit and we do make a list and we keep checking to make sure that they're complying with what we hired them to do.
And just as a brief addition to that, every single permission form that we give to a homeowner to sign has a spot on it that asks them whether or not they'd like to keep the wood. So that's designated well ahead of time when they sign the form, whether they want it to be removed or to be kept on the property. And they can also specify to have it be moved to a different portion of their property. So all those things related to any sort of leftover debris or wood is handled between ourselves as the inspectors and the homeowners, um, on the paperwork.
Okay, thank you, and, um, will, will police details be required?
Hubbardston, I believe, to my knowledge, uh, I think there, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the last I knew, there was, I don't know if it was a police rule that we have to use on every single road in town?
And, uh-
That was the last, that, that's my recollection, but I could be wrong if the law, if the town bylaw for the police has changed, but that's-
We now have, um, non-police officers that also direct traffic in town, that's something we started last year.
Within their union, it stipulates who goes when. If there are no sworn officers that are available, then they go to the traffic control. So yes, there will be town police officers used in the event that a traffic control is necessary or needed.
And who will be paying for that?
National Grid pays, pays for that, well, the, the tree contractors pay for it first and we reimburse them. So, but ultimately, we, we, National Grid's paying for the police details.
In the broad business, in the wood business.
Whitney, go ahead.
Okay, just, um, I, I just wanna know, was there any, uh, mitig- mitigation plan, plant for replacing trees?
Uh, for replacing trees?
Yep.
Uh, so, yep, National Grid can make a, a matching grant available if the town is interested. And, uh, how that would work is you apply in conjunction with, uh, the state, uh, DCR and, uh, they would help, we would provide money and the town with the help of DCR would provide the labor to do the planting, yeah.
So it would be a no cost to the town?
Yeah.
Labor costs.
The labor costs, yeah.
Or the labor costs, you said DCR would come through?
No, no, I'm sorry, they just help kind of, yeah, the town would provide the labor.
Okay, so we would install the trees, you would provide the funds, DCR would help us procure them?
Yeah, or like, you know, make sure they go in the right spot.
Anyone else have any other, Mike?
Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road, um, the property also extends from Lombard Road to New Westminster Road. And there are a couple of trees, they're tagged with Eric's tree warden notification. There's a red ribbon as previously described. Um, National Grid did have a representative contact me and I know about the permission form and that all seems to- Are you the one?
Yes, well-
Hi, how's it going? He was, he was a new employee, I think, two or three weeks on the job and he met me, you know? Thank you. He may have a different opinion.
No, I'm, I'm in a good way.
Oh, boy, good.
You're a wealth of knowledge.
So the question is, the, in my case, they are on, in the pro- uh, public right-of-way. So they're the town's trees, um, so you're, you're going to the property of butter and asking them if they want the wood, but it's a town tree, doesn't the town need to decide whether or not, you know, who gets the trees? Because people will go up and down the road and a tree that's on, one person abuts their property in the town right-of-way, they'll start cutting up and hauling it away. Um, so just because you're the abutter, that means we have the first right of refusal on the trees, so that's one question. And then the second one's very close to it, what about state land? Can anybody go when they're dropping the trees, can we go and get our firewood there? 'Cause New Westminster Road, New Westminster Road has two miles of state land along it, so, thank you.
So mass DOT, um, usually when I'm in communication with them, they want the wood removed, they don't want it left. They don't want any risk of wood. Sometimes if they're mow, if, um, we don't know all their plans, right? If they gotta mow on the side of the road, it could really mess up their plan if the, if the guys there are mowing that day. Or, you know, a piece of wood, you know, somebody, you know, was rolling into the, into the road. So mass DOT, unfortunately, unless you're right there that day, uh, with a pickup and you're out of the crew zone, uh, you prob- we probably have to remove, we usually remove that wood quicker. As far as, um, land abutters, from, from what I've seen in the past is we've always, we can't pu- nobody can be the, the police of the, of the wood, right? But if the landowner, you know, when we, when, when they go and talk to the landowner and they want the wood, I mean, the only thing they can really do is, um, I've seen people put signs, please don't remove wood, you know? I mean, that's about all you really can do, but nobody can really police, police it, you know? If we're supposed to remove it, we'll remove it, but if people really want it, it's really up to them to, you know, to, to get it off town property, on their property and unless, you know, the town says otherwise, that's kinda how we handle it, yeah.
I can, I can attest to that, 'cause in the last storm, I had a major tree, it was right on the road and out on my land, come down. Fortunately, it didn't take the wires or anything else. And then for the next two or three days, it was like ants at a picnic, people just came and kept chopping it.
Yeah.
The tree disappeared, so, uh, Mike?
Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road, follow-up Lance. Um, the road I'm talking about, New Westminster, is although it's got state property, it's not a state road.
Oh, okay.
So I don't think it's a, uh, M-GOT issue. Um, but the question still stands, I guess, if we're out of the way, we're being safe, and I don't cut the firewood, wait, I may show up. But if we're safe and we talk to the supervisor, foreman, crew, um, and there's wood available, it's first come, first served? First come, first take?
We probably have to talk to that, whoever the prop- uh, is it DCR property, you know?
It's DCR, it's why I like me and you.
We probably have to talk to them and see if they want it removed right away or are they okay with people coming in and taking it? I think that's the conversation that I would say probably have to take.
Yeah, and as a, as a quick follow-up to that, we did meet with the DCR representative who, uh, is in charge of that area there. And the only instruction that we were given was to leave the wood on property as long as it did not block any of their trails or roadways or it didn't interfere with any of the rock walls. So it sounds like if none of those things happen, I don't think he's gonna be upset that the wood disappears. 'Cause he's basically just trying to help us out by making it easier that we leave the wood on the property as long as we're not disturbing any of their maintained areas, trails or roads.
Whitney?
No, no, nothing, no.
Oh, I thought you-
She was just waiting.
What is, what is the, um, town right-of-way? What is the, so I live on New Westminster Road and I got some trees tagged. How do I identify them as town trees or private trees?
It varies by road.
Yeah.
About New Westminster?
Where's the center of that road?
To the center of the road, isn't it?
'Cause it goes, yeah, but the center, if you talk to Travis, it moves, so it depends on where, 'cause the way the road-
It's, it's the layout.
Is it twenty-five feet from the center?
So, no.
Is that how it works? There's no hard and fast, it's, each road is different.
So it's the layout. So when they, when the road's officially adopted by the town, right?
Yep.
Street or road, everyone remembers street or road, we adopted street or road. We had to have an engineered set of plans of what that road was. When the town accepted that as the public way, they voted on including the layout of the road. The layout specifically specifies the width of the road and gives you a complete drawing. So when you're looking for a right-of-way, whether or not it's a town-owned tree or not town-owned tree, most of the time someone's gonna have to pull the plans and the drawings from when that road was actually accepted, when the road was laid out and determine, okay, based on this, it looks like it's eight feet off of the center to the left. Go out, measure the road, see if the tree is within eight feet of. But there's no specific thing. It's not twenty, it's not twenty-five, it's not fourteen, it literally just depends.
So whatever the engineer says, basically.
Yeah, it, it's also not, it's, most of the time there are, um, like pins that have been surveyed. And the pins tend, tend to be on the corners of the lots rather than just dividing horizontally between two parcels. So generally those pins are placed at the edge of the town right-of-way for the parcel that's actually there. So if you see any sort of, they're usually like square stones or small metal pins with a pink flag on it sometimes. Those tend to mark out the corner of the lots, therefore horizontally along the roadway or the parcel line in front of that towards the road would be considered town property.
Anyone else have any further questions?
I have one question. Might as well drag it on.
I'll be here all night.
Can you, um, I may be one of those residents that you're looking for those last sixteen trees on and I'm struggling to get in touch with you folks and communicate back and forth, so can we get together before you leave?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So, let me get this right. Right-of-way. Town has a right-of-way on my property. I'm paying tax on that property, is that correct?
So the town right-
Or is that a neutral area?
So, no, the, so the town right-of-way is the town-owned property, right? So when we accept a road as public way, we're saying this is the town's public way. So every road is entirely different. You have to look at, you find the engineered plans for however the road was lay, laid out, so here's your house. Peter, right? So here's your house. You find the engineered plans. If it's a subdivision, you usually find, you can get a copy, usually at the registry of deeds, they'll have it on file. You figure out and it'll actually give you measurements. And then you utilize those measurements to figure out, you can cheat, which is a great way to do it, go out and see where the pins are and hope someone did it officially and measured it that way. Or you could pull out the layout plan, but that's way easier.
There are some computer apps out there too. Uh, I don't think, yeah, there's Mass Mapper, I don't know if you.
Mass Mapper, yeah.
That, that, I don't wanna name a couple of the ones, I know there's a few other ones.
The Tannic Coverston has its own G S map.
Those are not entirely accurate.
Yeah, yeah, you can rely on it.
But, uh, as far as, uh, deep plotting is concerned, but technically a right-of-way, you own that property, but somebody else has rights to use it. So you are paying taxes on it, but you have to surrender rights to it.
Yeah, I knew I was. Yeah, right-of-way just means they have the right-of-way to maintain that property, just like the telephone pole. They have a right to come in and work on that pole that's on my property. So I am paying taxes on it.
When endowed, you pay tax on everything, so.
Yeah. Anyways.
You've been town-owned property, you say, right, you pay taxes.
Final chance for further, uh, questions. Last one, go ahead.
Certainly. Why not wrap it up? Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road. I've heard a lot of comments stated by some folks that didn't identify themselves, um, because they might have spec- special.
That's Seth Meyers, he identified himself earlier.
Yeah, okay, but for those of them, those watching, they can't tell, um, because I've watched some Zooming. And that's not an issue. It just, it sounds like he has some specialized knowledge. And, um, select board member Peter just mentioned that, you know, you have this right-of-way, you know, who owns it? My question is, and I think I'll follow up like that lady did, and provide it in writing for you. But who does ro- own the road? And we need to keep it out of terms like right-of-way unless that's the proper descriptive term legally. And whether or not we're paying taxes on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so mass.gov, right-of-way acquisition, right-of-way. A right-of-way is publicly owned area reserved for transportation purposes.
Thank you. That contradicted and cleared up some earlier comments. Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road.
Happy Google.
Thank you. All right then, uh, there's no formal motion needed here, or falls into your lap. I have, you will approve the removal, et cetera, if necessary, after, so it's in your lap, Eric, okay? So thank you all for coming, uh, for this matter, but, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna move to other things.
Uh, may I?
Does someone have to make a motion or do I make, will you?
No, no, there's no.
So, so before Eric ends it officially, just, my only thing is, so I did look up MGL forty sections fifteen C and that's the scenic road bylaw. I'm not now, mind you, I'm reading on a four by two and a half screen, um, on Canva to boot, which is making it super easy to read the sections. I'm not seeing an exception, cause even the reference to maintenance requires it going through the, through the planning board. So even with Eric's approval, I, and I know you guys aren't chomping to do this project like tomorrow, if we can just double-check and see if we need any more.
They didn't come before the town for Ragged Hill, any of those trees. Two of them were on my property, they just came and cut them. They didn't tell me. Of course, I was compl- kinda complaining about them, cause they were dead, but.
I, yeah.
Just cause we did something, doesn't mean.
I'm, just saying, because they're, I was told before, and I, this could be wrong, I was told because they were dead and dying trees, they're hazard, therefore it becomes exempt. And it's somewhere in the state laws.
Okay, I just.
That's my interpretation as well as town tree warden?
Do you know, do you know where, I mean, we can, we can cover this off line.
No, I don't know where.
Yeah, I have, like, I have this, uh, I don't know how, I posted for everyone's time, really parse the legal stuffs, but, um.
That's good, go for it. Nope. Well, we have at least one resident and at home I'll have the planning board chair, so this will be helpful.
And I can send this too. So this is, um, it's from two thousand and five.
Yeah.
From Honorable David Scrivens, um, it says, he's the judge, uh, let's see. Dear, this is directed towards Row, uh, town of Row. Dear members of the board of electmen, um, you requested a legal opinion regarding the following question. Does the planning board or tree warden have jurisdiction over the cutting and removal of trees along Main Street? Which has been designated a scenic road pursuant to GLC forty.
Section fifteen C.
Section fifteen C, that's simple, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I had not realized that the cutting and removal of trees is proposed by the electric company and does not involve any, quote, repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work, end quote. In which case, chapter forty, section fifteen C would be implicated. In this case, where only tree cutting and no road repairs involved, only chapter eighty-seven, section three is implicated. The tree warden would have exclusive jurisdiction and the less stringent notice procedures set out in that section would be required. Just one more paragraph, it's not that long.
All right.
Conception.
That's great, I get it. So essentially you're saying it's not applicable because it's not, I think earlier, uh, to your point, it's not actually dealing with the road.
Yeah, it's, I agree, it's confusing, yeah.
So when you're doing something that's identified as strictly the tree not dealing with the road, therefore it will not apply.
I know like, uh, last year or two, uh, National Grid lawyer did another deep dive into it for, uh, another town and basically backed this because it, uh, to say, yeah, it's the road not being touched doesn't apply.
Okay. All right then. Again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Time.
Good night.
You too.
I like Brian.
Gentlemen, you, you did a great job.
Been in like being a little bit.
Yeah.
Chair, hey.
Do we need to take a recess for a minute?
Yes, we'll take a recess for a minute.
Oh, possibly, yeah.
She's.
She actually wanted.
I just haven't seen any of the new ones. I saw the tags. Probably, the poles were being done, but now, I don't see a tag anymore, but I have it, you know what I mean?
Well, it's nice that they explain that they have two overlapping things, cause that causes confusion of going with the second. Wow, they're getting pretty close here. They better start to get the permission.
They're supposed to go all the way to the line, right?
Yeah, yeah, near Meadow, yeah.
Yeah, so just kinda, they're kinda extending it. I don't know what you're doing with poles.
Well, a lot of that is temporary.
Thank you, thank you for entertaining my question.
But all those poles.
Yeah, actually, good, that'd be super helpful.
Telephone, yeah. Communications.
Communications.
Do you have your card?
We don't have fiber options, right? So it's all wood, copper wire.
Thank you very much.
Well, I don't know that, but I know where there is copper, both underground and above. It's Lombard Road. So, but the comms is different. I think they like lease the space.
You just say that?
Yeah, the power companies.
No.
The other way around, leases from the power.
Yeah, right, yeah. Cause they, they have the bigger cost and they, they're the first ones.
Good luck.
Yeah. Well, years ago, it was always.
So you have the trees on.
Fix the pole, somebody put a tower.
I came.
I don't, well, uh, they can hire whoever they want, you know what I mean?
That's what I remember. Yeah.
Maybe the power company say, okay, telephone guys, your infrastructure.
Yeah. It was usually, I remember, where I grew up, the phone company always come out and fix the pole. Chris, my mother moved, that's how I got back.
Yeah.
On the way to work.
All I, uh, all I know through, through my experience, usually it's the power company takes the lead.
Well, at least I get something back for life, increased rate.
Yeah.
Right?
We're gonna move on, okay? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, uh, we will move on to the next item, which is the library board of trustees. Strategic planning, wanna join us at the table? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for the good of the order, there is a member of the library trustees attending virtually as well.
Oh, thank you very much, I didn't realize that, okay? Uh, Connie.
Krista, can you hear us still?
Oh, right.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right then, Connie, go.
Great, um, well, first of all, thank you all for, for giving us a chance to, to come and talk to you today a little bit about our strategic planning process. Um, one of our goals is just to be very transparent about, um, the direction that kind of the library might be moving in. Um, so, we're just gonna talk about a couple of things. Um, just to give you a little bit of background. We did our first strategic plan in twenty nineteen. Um, and we submitted it to the MBLC, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Um, when we do that, it enables us to apply for grants, it can be programming grants, construction grants, facility grants, so forth. In addition, it's just helpful to have a strategic plan, so we know the direction that we're moving in. Um, so, we're in the process of doing our second iteration of the plan. This past spring, we did a community survey. We had about a hundred and fifty-two people respond to the community survey, kind of about what, um, what they wanna see in the library. Uh, we did, um, focus groups, they're more like small group interviews, cause we didn't get a big audience for focus groups. But we, um, had some more in-depth conversations with some of our citizens in the community. And then as a, um, after that, the library trustees and the library staff, we did a SWAT and a SWR analysis. Um, and so from that, we kind of came up with our strategic priorities. Um, in your packets, you have all the results from the community surveys and focus groups, um, we're not gonna talk about that. Uh, what we wanna focus on primarily is our mission, vision, and, um, value statements, and then also the strategic priorities to be identified. So, we just recently updated our mission statement and our vision statement. Um, I'll just read them to you quickly. Uh, and it says, uh, the Hubbardston Public Library is dedicated to inspiring, supporting, and connecting our local community by procuring and ensuring access to a variety of quality materials, technologies, programs, and services to fulfill each patron's educational, recreational, and cultural needs regardless of all ages, abilities, or background. It's a lot packed in there. Um, and then our vision statement, what we're aspiring to be is through our collections, services, and programs, we will be a reliable resource, ensuring that our community has access to the materials and information they seek, fostering a culture of lifelong learning and discovery. So that's kind of the core of what we are trying to do. Um, at the heart of all this is, our goal is for inclusivity for all patron groups regardless of all ages. We want them to be able to participate, use the library, have it be part of their life. And then we have them be able to use the library regardless of whether it's for recreational or for educational, right? So we kinda wanna be, we'll all encompassing with that. Um, we just adopted our value statements, um, last month, and Chris is gonna talk a little bit about, about those, so.
Okay. So it'll be Hubbardston Boles Library Value Statement. Values that guide our library are: access to information. We support the freedom to read and ensure confidential access to information for people of all ages, abilities, and means. Professionalism. We strive to deliver the highest quality library services in a friendly, approachable, and knowledgeable manner. Community engagement. We ensure the library is a welcoming space and provide educational and recreational programming for lifelong learning in collaboration with community groups and organizations as possible. And good stewardship. We hold ourselves accountable for the efficient and effective use of all resources, people, time, preservation of assets, and funds. And that was approved by the trustees on May second, twenty twenty-four.
Question?
Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. Um, confidential access, could you explain that, please?
Confidential access is, um, to ensure that people who are borrowing books or whatever items that they want, there is no record. We cannot give anybody a record. If you came in and borrowed, um, Waffles and Pancakes graphic novel, I couldn't tell anybody what you had just borrowed.
So I don't, you don't check out books anymore?
I do check out books, but I do not keep a record outside of what is on your card at the time. I can't tell anybody what is on your card or what you have borrowed.
Correct, so that's your meaning of confidential. You're not telling somebody this, well, this person took, this person took this book out, what a freak.
I'm not telling Chris.
You know what I mean?
Um, yeah, I'm not telling, I'm not telling Chris that you're, you're a graphic novelist.
So that's, that's, that's your confidential, okay, thank you.
That is, you know, Chris, he's here as a, as a patron and he gets to do what he wants.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
But if he forgets to return Waffles and Pancakes graphic novel, you're gonna.
Then I, I would, I would contact him after a while and be like, would you bring it back?
Fine him. Do you fine people?
We don't fine. A few years ago, there was a growing, um, trend in the United States that, uh, fines inhibit the people who need the library the most, um, that the people who.
I thought, uh, I got to finish.
Um, that the people who are financially, who are in financial straits, if they get an overdue notice, they're gonna be less likely to come back to the library to borrow books, whereas now, I get my books back.
I'm just gonna, just be quiet. I'm, I mean, as a kid growing up, when I went to, it taught responsibility, for me, as a kid, when I grew up. So there's no responsibility anymore.
Well, if they never return the book, then yes, they do get a bill saying you have returned.
They do, okay.
Yeah. If they, if the book reaches lost.
But if they don't have the money, means to pay a fine, how they gonna pay for a book?
Well, then they bring the book back. That's, that's, that's my goal. My goal is, I want my books back, well, the town's books back, so I apologize again, a little possessive here.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, all right.
Um, what happens is, is that.
So there is an end game, that's all.
There is an end game.
Thank you.
I want, I, we do want the books back, so other people can borrow them.
Excellent, thank you.
And, uh, sending out the letters saying, your book is lost, please return it. And they do.
Okay.
We just want a nickel and dime of like the dollar days and that, bring the book back.
No, I hear you, yeah, I hear you, but we got nickled and dimed as kids, so, but I, if you're responsible, you return your book. They don't teach that in school anymore, so.
Oh, no, you get fined if you do not return a book in school, but.
They don't teach responsibility.
Wow, I.
I think we're going off topic.
Yes, we are.
I don't care, it's my right to speak.
Um, so shifting to the, the next, um, strategic priorities that we have, um, have a graphic, um.
Reviewing.
Mm-hmm.
Circle.
It should be, it might be the first one.
Scroll way past the first one.
I don't see that.
It's three consecutive circles.
There it is. Nope, no, first circle.
It's, I think it was.
Paints its whole line up.
Okay, there you go, ta-da.
No. That's SWAT sore.
No, no.
I can, I can, I can, I can.
I'm just looking for. I'm just looking for a page number.
If not, it would be at the very end then, because, um.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking. There's forty-one pages in there.
So, there was a lot of data that we collected, part of the survey.
I guess, oh my god.
It is, oh my god.
So we got, so we learned a lot of information, we learned a lot through, through the surveys.
Guys are busy, huh?
So, um, so, this graphic is, uh, the Hubbardston Public Library Strategic Priorities, um, we're gonna start with the innermost circle first.
Can I get a page on that, please?
It's the very last one.
Oh, it is, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That would be forty-one.
Forty-one or thirty-one.
Um, and.
There we go.
As a strategic priority, we want to increase the use visibility of the library. The people who use the library love the library, and we got really favorable comments. But we also found about forty-five percent of the respondents either never used the library, or they use it like once or twice a year, right? Variety of reasons for that, um, some of it's related to accessibility issues, um, the library's an old building, not very accessible, people have commented about lack of parking. Um, you know, and then some people have said that they, they forgot that the library was here, right, which, you know, closes you a little bit when you hear that. And then also people are busy, right, so with all these competing priorities, um, sometimes the library doesn't like make the cut, right? So, one of the things we really wanna try and focus on over these next five years is really trying to find ways to engage the community so that they want to come to the library, that it is a priority and it becomes part of their routine. Something that you do every week, just as you might go hiking with your friend every week or something. Um, so that's our kind of overarching goal of what we wanna do over the next five years. As we did our SWOTS and we looked at the survey data, um, we kind of identified potential ways that we think we can get there, um, which is in that middle column, and I'm gonna let Chris talk about those, so.
All right, um, so, the inner circle is, there are strategic priorities, and our goal is really to increase the visibility of the library in town. The previous strategic, ah, sorry, the previous strategic plan that the trustees implemented in twenty nineteen was a valuable tool to help me guide, me and, to help guide me and my staff. We anticipate that the new strategic plan will offer the trustees and staff an improved roadmap to let everyone in town know where, what the library has to offer them. And the six sections we're planning on focusing are, we wanna maintain, uh, our children's programs, strong children's programs, we wanna improve collaboration with our town and local organizations, increase and diversify our marketing and promotion, offer a larger print collection, printed book collection, create more robust adult, teen, and family programming, and a more inviting space. So in the last five years, we have, Storytime was reintroduced. During COVID, our former Storytime person offered it over Facebook through videos, um, and when our new Storytime leader came on board, she increased our storytimes from once a week to twice a week with a additional storytime on Saturdays on a monthly basis, so she's trying to expand, let every, have a bigger variety group of people see what's going on. They've, she's collaborated with the Hubbardston D, DTW in the past, and she plans to expand collaboration with other town departments in the coming fiscal year. We expect the Storytime schedule to continue in FY twenty-five. We will investigate additional collaboration for family, teen, and adult programming. At this time, our marketing centers on social media, our website, signboard, the town's electronic signboard, and the Baragaz app. I need to identify the appropriate social media for different age groups and create a way to market there. We spend just under twenty thousand dollars on supplies for the library, this is only for items that patrons can borrow. In the coming months, I will be reevaluating our vendors to get the best value for the items that we purchase. Audio CDs usage has dropped along with MP3s, but the majority of the items borrowed at the library is still physical books. However, item usage through the Libby app has grown sixty-four percent for eBooks in the last five years, while e-audio has grown by seventy-four percent in the same time period. Our adult programming has been inconsistent, it is my goal to create at least one adult program each month. One area where we expect improvement is offering more family and teen programming. The survey offered many suggestions, but the majority of the respondents were in the fifty to sixty age group, so I'm hoping to offer suggestion cards for the ideas for the patrons. I love that library building, um, it's a wonderful architectural, it, the architecture is amazing, the details are fantastic, and, uh, I love it, I just love being there. Um, but it is a hundred and fifty years old.
You're gonna have AC soon too, right?
Yeah, yes.
Another plus, people go there to cool off, right?
That would be nice.
Brings more people in.
That would be nice, excuse me. Uh, one of the issues we have is the stairs leading to the main entrance are a barrier to a portion of our population. Many seniors are not comfortable using the stairs and thus no longer visit the library. The lift is manual, it needs library employee assistant to raise and lower it, and that deprives our patrons the freedom to get around by themselves. We also have no quiet area for students to study, when we do offer programming, we use the children's room, which closes it off from use. I want you to know that our biggest strength, according to the survey, is our library staff, and I agree with that. Their relationship with the library patrons is amazing. In a world of numbers and data sets, it's our belief that our patrons be treated as human beings. Uh, they are greeted with a smile, and what can we do for you today? We want them to come to the library and know that we will help them find a book, a movie, or even a ukulele if they want. Without my staff, the library is just another pretty building, the staff is the heart and soul of the library, and they work at creating an inviting space for our patrons. Thank you.
But, oh, like Chris, I'd say, Chris and Trisha and Anne are amazing for our staff, I think, are doing a great job. So, as we think about how, how we get there, right, we've identified, like, there are some driving factors that we have to think about, right? And these are just the realities of, of our situation. And one of the things we probably are gonna have to start thinking about is thinking about additional funding streams, right? Whether that be grants, um, and, you know, Nate had worked very hard to get us our new cooling and heating system grant, and I love that you've mentioned about that it would be a cooling center in summer, cause we actually kind of worked that into the CIPC grant for that, because we realized that could be something, that could be valued to, to the people here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can be looking at, um, additional fundraising opportunities or increases in operating budgets, but in order to be able to do some of these things, we're gonna have to try and figure out additional funding revenues for it. Um, along with that would be the staffing levels as well. Currently, um, we are open seven more hours a week than we are required to by the state, and that's because, um, Kristen's doing a great job being a good steward of our funds and that, you know, we've been able to, to really work hard to, to maximize the, um, what we, our return on investment, that's what we're looking at. Um, and staffing levels, you know, it takes time in staffing to plan programs, to think about collections, you know, to think about new spaces or, and all of that. So, that's another kind of, uh, driving factor that's on our minds, and then, as this has come up quite a few times already, it's, um, the library building for all of, it, for, for, it's a great building, but we do have the issues with ADA, um, um, and we are limited to the main floor of the, of the building, right? So.
You used to talk, right.
No, we can't, um, so, as we have these great ideas for spaces, you know, like creating a quiet study space, creating a, um, like a meeting space where people, right? Like, we are limited to where we're currently at, so.
Plus, plus, as long as we are there in the cellar, you are missing out on a lot of opportunities that the historical building would get, but it's supposed to be only a library, and as long as there's people in the cellar, our people, you miss out on all of the possibilities there, which is really frustrating, it has.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that is very true, and, and one thing, just to kind of clarify that a little bit, like, there's certainly some grants that we can't apply for specifically with the MBLC.
It's really frustrating. Now, it just indicated any more, because it's just a historical factor, yeah.
Because of, yes. Yeah, um, but some of those grants are matching grants as well, so, you know, even if we were getting an MBLC construction grant, um, the town would need to, to match that as well. Um, so that kind of also goes into, to funding streams. So, this is kind of where we're at, um, over the summer, we're taking these stra- strategic priorities, we're going to turn them into goals and objectives and action items with the goal of, um, approving it in September and submitting it to the MBLC in late September or October. We've come to you because we value your input, and we are, you know, interested in hearing kind of like what you are thinking about for the library. Adding fines, right?
Excuse me?
So adding fines back?
No. May I speak?
Yeah.
Thank you. As part of your strategic plan, uh, does that building have a generator?
No.
Okay, so you lose your cooling, so you lose your cooling center, right? So, maybe part of your strategic plan should be to implement self-power when our grid goes down, cause I knew you had a problem last winter where you couldn't heat the building, cause you had a boiler issue, well, let's say the power goes down, you're not gonna be able to heat your building, right? So, you wanna speak?
We have a great idea.
Okay, go ahead.
Considering the fact that the project for the heating and cooling is currently at a grand pause due to the fact that the building does not have three phases.
Okay.
Maybe we can do that, once we have three phases.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, just, I didn't read any, I didn't know if they had a generator, but I, I know when you lost your, uh, heat last year.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
So, um, but you probably still have electricity, right? Did you have electricity, I know you.
Yep, yes, yes.
So.
Yes, sir. Identify yourself, please.
Seth Myers, one seventy Williamsville.
Thank you.
Is, is the library part of an established, like, uh, town master plan, is it like a, you know, a, a five-year, ten-year, twenty-year plan? And is the library part of that, um, you know, in terms of development?
Library is part of our master plan, and the library is part of all previous facilities' plans, the last one being in two thousand seventeen. Uh, it's something I was gonna bring up a little later, we are currently working towards updating our ADA plan via grant, cause the last time we updated the ADA plan was in two thousand and seven. So that is something we'll be working on in the upcoming months, but yes, the library is a fundamental part of all town plans, considering that it is our most beautiful investment.
Thank you. I forget if it was one of you or, you mentioned one of the negatives things being the stairs for especially elderly people, cause, uh, they're not tiny, they're. I can see that, that can really deter anyone wanting to go there as far.
And there's not really handrails.
And, oh, uh, definitely that, it's not handicapped.
Yeah.
It's not accessible for the small path that go.
Right.
Yeah, it's like climbing a mountain, you know, so.
Well, I mean, it wasn't built during the days where they worried about that stuff, so.
Yeah. No, but there's also ADA grants.
You have to update, when you, whenever you go to modify, you have to bring it into current ADA.
Right.
Yeah, Chris doesn't know it, but she's part of the ADA group that is working.
Cool.
I just learned this last week.
Alright, awesome, welcome aboard.
Lucky you.
That was supposed to have been the build, first building of Clark College, did you know that?
Surprise.
I did not.
No.
When he built it, Ian wanted to have a college here, but the town turned him down.
I did, I did, I did know.
Yeah, they should have had a college, yeah.
Something.
Think of the money, it would have brought in.
It certainly would have changed the tone of the town.
Well.
Certainly would.
Well, there actually was a, a college here.
Be a different world, wouldn't it, yeah?
There was.
Yeah, there was a different college here.
Well, it was a totally different time too, there was, there was a lot more business back then.
Yeah, I, more work.
It's a lot of history, it's a lot of history.
Are we talking horse and buggy, or are we talking?
Connie.
Yeah. What?
Did you have any?
Oh.
Did I interrupt, you have proof?
Oh, no, no, I just, so I was just letting you, uh, interesting, and, well, uh, any thoughts that you have about the strategic planning process? Or, um, thoughts about what you would like to see in the plan?
I, I think this was, you know, I've read a good portion of it, I didn't read every slide, and the slides weren't numbered, so when I dropped it in the fifty-two pickup, I cried, um.
Oh, no.
But that's okay, it happens. I, I, just a couple of things, so, um, oftentimes it's like an HMPG grant and some other grants, we could go for a generator for that building, so if you actually get to the three-phase part, and then, you know, you get the AC in, then you can always add that back to Peter's idea, the cooling center, and then it brings more people there. Um, you know, my family and I have had opportunity to attend a number of the Storytimes on Saturdays, they're great, and I know I talked to you guys about this early on as well, as, you know, just, and it very well could be in one of the slides, did you do an analysis of what hours people have access to the library?
So, we did ask a question about whether they were satisfied with the library hours, um, and the majority of people said that they, they were. We did ask them if they wanted it different hours, um, but when we did ask a question about programming, we asked, like, when would you come to a program?
Okay.
To kind of get an idea for, that, you know, for the, the family programs, do they wanna happen like after school, or do they wanna happen like in the evening, you know, um, do you wanna have it on Saturday morning? So, we got a, an interesting variety of results about like when different populations want to have programs, so.
So the other thing I'd say, you know, as I had pushed a number of months ago, and you guys delivered kindly on the Saturday Storytimes even once a month, sometimes you're just gonna try things a couple of times to see, because I think what the hard part, right, is if people don't use the library, then you may not be getting the same answer, right? And just because someone says, oh, well, if you do this, I'll come.
Right.
Maybe, you know, eventually they will, if there's something that brings their attention in, but, you know, just, and I know it's hard with staff, but the good news is it's only like three people, so it's easy to coordinate, right?
It's very easy to coordinate, and Trisha's phenomenal in her Storytime work, and she just started a Dungeons and Dragons program.
Very dedicated, all of you, yeah, extremely, yeah.
She's a, she's a very, very vibrant, uh, Anne does a fantastic job, she's really cleaned up the library, got rid of a lot of the, uh, um, we have better, we have more space now for new stuff. So, new, new books are coming in, cause, uh, she's done a great job in cleaning up the ones that have been sitting around for a very long time that no one borrows.
I have one last, if anybody doesn't mind, so, I see your increased library space is part of your plan, is that, does that in, I won't, I would like to see it include getting the people out of the basement.
Yeah.
Is that part of that?
That, that would, yes, that would be what include, increase library spaces would be, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Are you issuing eviction notices?
I would like to, but I know we're kind of stuck.
We need to have space for those other people to go to.
No, I, I understand that, so I just wanted it part of the strategic plan, you gotta have a plan to look forward and move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we wanna be able to do, to create more inviting spaces, um, and have more diverse spaces, we're gonna need to have more space someplace, and so, if we, if we're staying in the building,
True.
then, you know, the basement level would be the space of, you know.
Has enough to build you a new library.
So, or if we could get, um, yeah, or if we got an elevator, we could, then maybe do something with the, uh, the second floor.
Yeah, second, so there's no stairs up to, I need to come, I'm coming, I'm coming for a tour.
There's stairs, there is.
Is it just not A-ing and fine?
Cole, come on over, I'll be happy to.
What time?
Uh, tomorrow is, uh, tomorrow is four to seven, uh, Wednesday's ten to four, Thursday's one to seven.
Oh. Alright, I'll see you Wednesday, ten AM.
Can't do it.
I'll be here.
If you can't.
We're calling us done.
Oh.
He's doing a professional development from ten to twelve, so, um, if you come at, at twelve-thirty, I'll be there.
Okay. Yeah, that's lunchtime. Alright, so I'll be in Wednesday, we'll bring lunch with us.
Cool.
We'll grant on your professional development.
Bring lunch with us.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you all for taking the time, we're gonna.
Oh, sorry, one more, uh.
My apologies, Seth Myers, one seventy Williamsville, so, um, just kind of thinking about staffing, I'm, I'm just wondering if there is any, uh, opportunity to, uh, you know, as I understand it, the high school has a volunteer requirement, if that has been looked at, or if that's something that you're doing, maybe, um, taking on, you know, high school students to be able to, to help staff and assist to the library, and if, if that might be, uh, you know, something that we could do to, to help alleviate, uh, you know, some of the staffing issues, if that is an issue, I'm not sure that it is, but just a, just a thought or, or, you know, comment, sorry.
Would that be making you top heavy, so to speak, I mean.
No, we, we do have a volunteer program, and, uh, we actually do have a student coming to finish up some, uh, community hours. Uh, actually, I've had other students come and help with trick-or-treating, and.
Yeah, mine always show up.
They always show up, which I very much appreciate it, um, to help shelving, um, do, there's a whole bunch of different things that they can do. In addition, I also have, uh, a couple of adult volunteers who come in, and they help out as well, so, you know, they make it eas, they make it easier for us to work on other things that we can't normally yet to address. So, that is, we do have volunteers, so thank you for mentioning it.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
It was a good club.
And three times to my knowledge, the town proper has hired on library part-time employees to other roles to kind of keep them in their ability to be able to do that. So there's, there's partnerships, the most current example is the Storytime lead slash land use clerk, so.
Good, Mike, I got the last one, I guess, but.
Thank you, Mike Stahl, five Lombard Road, uh, I'd like to thank the library, I remember it when it had a glass floor for the mezzanine, and it's not that library anymore. The glass mezzanine, uh, the glass floor and the mezzanine is gone, but they do have some other wonderful things, you know, we think of books and CDs and, uh, books on tape and all the, and DVDs.
A-tracks.
But they even have more, if you don't use or haven't been in the library recently, they've got, um, thermal imager there and some other equipment and tools and instruments, I think, musical instruments.
Yeah.
So, I encourage you to go, and thank you again, thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's like my only thank you, for everything, a lot of work and.
Thank you. We'll let you know when the plan is completed, and we'll send you all on the, uh.
As much as we can, we'll help you out, as much as we can, but.
Krista, did you wanna add anything before we go, there is another library trustee.
Uh, no, thank you for the opportunity, but, um, I think Connie and Chris did a great job of, uh, summarizing all the work that we put into the plan, and we really do appreciate having the opportunity to present it to the select board.
Okay then.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate the support you guys have us. Oh, I do have one question, what is the banned books collection? Uh, alright, so, sorry, sorry.
There we go.
Alright, you just said short. So, September is banned book month, and basically what it is, is has a book been banned in the country, or has been, you know, uh, condemned for inappropriate? Or something that somebody didn't approve of, so, what I do is I go out and I buy the book, because. Why not? You should, and, uh, so, every book that's been banned somewhere in the country, but not here.
Florida, maybe.
Potentially, has a little black mark on it that says banned, so, people can see that these books, uh, someone didn't like something about them.
Pretty much so. Oh, yeah.
And in my opinion is, if someone didn't like something about them, you should probably see what it is, you know, but, yeah, so, yeah, that's my, that's my take on banned books. Thank you. I saw that in the survey, and I was like.
You can do a fun thing, Dorian Lunt, where you sit on like a jail suit, and be like caught reading a banned book.
What's a jail suit? Just kidding. I know, I know what a jail suit is, I haven't been in jail.
Moving on, we have a dissent agenda, let me go through it for you guys, and, um, first of all, the minutes, April sixteen, Heather was absent for that. Uh, other than that, we were all here, we have appointments, Marsha Hopper, registrar, board of registrars expires three thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. We have wage authorization for Patricia Lowe, land use clerk, land use department, twenty-two dollars and five cents, six-month status. Uh, Phil Terryell, on-call firefighter, fire department, fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents, received ENT certification. Anthony Estucio, laborer DPW, twenty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, a new hire. And we have a resignation, Marsha Hallett, registrar, board of registrars, effective five fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, it's my own pet hands did it, if you look, the, uh, on-call firefighter, his new wage is seventeen eleven, I put his old rate. He gets a dollar fifty for maintain, for getting that new certification.
Oh, as opposed to.
So, it's seventeen eleven, as opposed to fifty, sixty-one.
As opposed to the fifteen, okay, thank you.
I put his current rate, you know.
Okay, seventeen eleven, okay. So, uh, are there any hold, or any questions on anything about the plan?
One hold, one question, if we can hold the minute, so I can vote on everything else. And then, on the resign, on, so, board of registrars, right, so you're taking off Marsha Hopper, who's a.
Hallett.
No, we take, oh, sorry, you're putting on Marsha Hopper, who's.
No, she's, she's resigned.
No, Mar- no, they're both Marsha.
Oh, okay.
You gotta get with the program here, Jeff, ends in confusion.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Marsha Hopper.
Okay, yeah.
Point man.
Is a Republican, right? Hold on. Nate, focus, Marsha has stopped the key.
Well.
Marsha Hopper is the Republican, right, she's coming on, and Marsha Hallett is a Democrat, and she's coming off, is our board of registrars still balanced?
Our board of registrars is still balanced, because we were missing two before, so there was a vacancy, and there was a.
Okay.
Yes, it's still balanced, uh, the, the Democratic Town Committee has been contacted to.
Okay. I just. Yes. Yeah.
To appoint a member, cause that's how this works, the committees send the list of people yearly, and we go from there.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I was just checking, and at first I thought it was the same Marsha who changed her status, and we were reappointing her, we're just.
No. Marsha Hopper brings, brings us to an ability to be able to meet, so it's Joyce Green, Mel Green, Marsha Hopper.
That's a good catch.
Ms. Hallett, I don't really wanna go into detail, she will likely be resigning all positions with the town due to health concerns.
Okay. Okay, awesome.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Does Anthony Estucio have any special licenses or certifications, or is it just strictly gonna be all labor?
Anthony. Anthony Estucio has all of the licensure that Travis requires to work down there, his CDL, his, I forget what else, but he has all proper license.
I thought he was missing a four G.
What was that?
I thought he was missing a four G on his, uh, hoisting license. I'm pretty sure he's required to have a four G, eh, but I saw that noted, um, on his.
But he has his other endorsements.
Yeah.
He's committed to getting his four G hoisting license, it would've been six months, he has everything else that was required.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anything else? And you said you wanted to have a hold on the minutes.
Hold on the minutes, Jeff, so that I can vote on everything.
Okay, you ready?
Okay, so everything but the minutes right now, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so, if we could have a motion, uh, for items B, C, and D, uh, as presented, come on.
Second.
Motion made, second, any con, uh, discussions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now, on the minutes, Heather was absent, so, uh, do we have any, uh, questions? Could we have a, a motion to accept the minutes?
Some of them.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, a discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, abstaining?
Yes.
One, okay, dissent agenda is passed.
Are we still hiring for, are we still leaning bodies for DPW?
One more.
Okay.
This is permanently engraved in the site, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't, just, seriously.
Please, next thing we should be able to go through, yes, okay, um.
I was gonna can't do this.
Next item is the common victual of Maddie's Ice Cream Truck and More LLC. Um, this is also, we needed to add here, a Hocker-Pedlar license.
Hmm.
Plus, besides the, uh, common victual license, so that's what, uh, we need to vote to, unless you have any questions about it, go ahead.
On the Hocker-Pedlar license, Nate, do, first of all, do we generally get any in town of Hubbardston? And do we have a process through the police department for them to get ID'd and information?
So, we do have a process for them to get ID'd, but the ID machine is currently broken, and the chief cannot pay for the ID machine to get fixed until the new fiscal year. So, he's been issuing letters that say, this person is who they say they are, signed Chief Gudra.
Do we charge for the licenses?
Yes, twenty-five dollars.
She wants, she wants to be on the jury now, um.
How much?
Twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars per, um.
Right.
So, she, she paid fifty dollars for these two licenses.
So, is that where the hawking comes in, driving around town?
Yeah, she wants, yeah, basically.
She wants, she wants solicence.
Yeah.
On the street, yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
What is, what, what exactly is Maddie's ice cream truck?
It's an ice cream truck.
Ice cream truck.
The more is confusing you, isn't it?
So, she's gonna actually sell.
Like, you guys want all those little white trucks, that drive around, bring the music and things?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but she does not sell the, like, SpongeBob novelty pop, she does scoops.
Yeah, yeah. The novelty. Yeah.
Oh, real ice cream.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she's gonna go to like.
Home is, home is.
And she's in Gardner, Westminster, Ashburnham, Templeton.
So, she'll show up at the Redfield, the, the pond, you know, stuff like that, wherever there's a bunch of kids.
She's gonna show up.
Muskoby, but is she just gonna like drive around and play the music, up and down streets?
No.
Yeah, in certain neighborhoods, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure she's going to go to places like the parks, realizing that there's more people there, but on occasion, in the middle of events, I'm sure she will drive down certain neighborhoods.
Yes, where kids are.
Yes.
Muskoby.
Oh.
Maybe down the ninety roads of, ninety miles of roads in Hubbardston, dirt roads, probably not, but maybe the Dogwoods, the Peters neighborhood, like, I'm sure.
I know.
Yeah.
You're gonna have your money, right?
I haven't heard that music tune in a long time, I want it.
Yeah. Right, okay, could we have a, a motion then to approve and sign the, uh, l- license and Hocker-Pedlar license?
Some of them.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Okay, then we have, uh, the June fourth, twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant, that needs to be approved and signed. Uh, is there any discussion on this, or could we have a motion for that?
Are there any changes, Nate?
The only changes are on the revenue side, certainly not indicated in the attachment, and the minor change of removing the request that I had for additional tree funding. I'm, if I talk to Eric and a few other people, maybe we'll try to go and get some more in the fall, but right now, my attempt here was to meet the school at their current proposal of nine point four six, noting that it is not fair, it is not sustainable, it is not something we can live with, but it is somewhere that we can meet them. And they did come down considerably from their almost twelve percent, twenty-six thousand dollars, in my opinion, is not worth holding up their whole budget, but it should be known to them that it is not acceptable.
Okay, so the warrant has the modification of the school budget coming down?
The warrant. Mm-hmm.
And removal of the tree warden's request for additional funding to actually cut trees.
Yeah. Yes, the rest of the funding comes from the fact that I have, you'll notice in there, the one change was I removed the twenty-five thousand dollars to capital stabilization to maintain the rest of the warrant items. Because we do hit our capital stabilization goals, removing the sixty-five without the, without the twenty-five going in of one percent of the budget. Remained the general, kept the general stabilization number in there, because if next year's budget goes up by the four to five percent, as it has been going up annually, we would no longer be at our five percent of the operating budget goal. So, the only part that was removed was the free cash deposit into capital stabilization. Everything else remains the same, minus a few minute numbers.
Okay.
So, then I heard this correctly, the school budget number we're voting on includes the most recent number you just sent out, but not the twenty-six additional needed.
It does, it includes, uh, it, the nine point four six increase.
It's the total amount that she's looking for on this latest revision, okay.
Anything else?
But you're not sure where we're gonna get that money from yet?
The proposal is free cash, it's about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in free cash versus the hundred and twenty that we were proposing before. There's very few areas left to pull money from, and I can't at this stage in the game go and cut more from departments that have already been nickled and done.
Understood.
So, their actual increase is nine point three six, you said?
Nine point four six.
Four.
Over last year?
Yes.
For our assessment. Which is still down from their twelve point.
Which is down.
Yeah, I underst- I understand that, but still, that's, that's a still a big hit.
And their eleven point nine eight.
Which was their last version.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay, anything else be, and if not, could we have a motion to, to approve and so, and sign the final warrant for the June fourth, twenty twenty-four annual town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carried. Okay, item C, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four annual town election warrant. I, unless, if you have any questions, basically it's a motion to approve and sign that warrant for the annual town election.
So moved.
A second.
Motion made in second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Sorry. Aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed, abstained, motion carried.
To those watching from home, there are several vacancies that you may run for by writing your name in, so, please.
Or your neighbor.
Please give your neighbor, like.
Or your neighbor has, somebody you like, somebody you don't like, who cares, just write a bid.
Important one, like.
Is there anybody fighting against each other?
Finance committee, they can't operate.
No one is running against anyone, if there are more vacancies than there are people.
Yeah, we need finance committee.
They can't operate, we don't have.
I know, please.
Until they can have, please.
Down the two, Miss Susan Rain is going to be done at the end of this time.
Yes, Susan's, yeah, she's finished.
Hey, Seth, you wanna, you wanna?
Alright, let's go through this, uh.
We need a numbers person.
Item D, uh, now we're trying not, not to make this public, but would be, would be interesting.
Sorry.
What's up?
I know we're broadcasting.
That's the.
What positions exactly are open?
Oh.
Okay, uh, first, first annual citizen of the year nomination for William Shea.
Probably everything. Uh, yeah.
We have a motion to name.
So moved.
Yeah.
As Hubbardston's inaugural citizen.
Second of the year.
A motion's been made in second, any discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, that was the problem with the whole thing, if you remember, we talked about it during, when we were creating the rules for this, that it would've been overwhelmingly awkward to discuss that.
Yeah. Yeah. You can't discuss it. Yeah.
And we couldn't go into executive session, so it is what it is. I'm gonna call his daughter to ensure that he is going to be at town meeting, we've already ordered the plaque, I'm gonna make a proclamation to, and I'll call you on it.
Good. Certainly deserves it.
Yes.
I think, um, if I may, you just, you just put out a plea, get more people to volunteer on boards, and we got someone right here in the audience who seemed interested. Can we give him the floor for a minute, and maybe explain to him what the process is, and what's, what's open to sign up for?
Sure, that's what I was saying, if you can reach out to me at any time or stop by, there is a good amount of seats open. Now, we have two people leaving Conservation Commission, the Finance Committee, if we get to the end of the year without naming somebody, the end of the fiscal year, without somebody being appointed, they cannot meet. We're very fortunate that most of the time they don't need to meet in the summer, so we can likely get to what, uh, to a time period where we would appoint someone due to a fail, failure to elect. Which is how a lot of these rollover seats have been happening, and I had the suggestion of a select board member. Last year, we did utilize the charter provision to try and change some of these positions that were going year after year after year in, in getting fail, a failure to elect to appointed positions, but that did not fly. There was a sentiment of, do not take my elected positions away, even though we do not want to run for them. So, there, that, it is what it is, there, I can, if you email me or stop by, I can give you the whole laundry list. And then I know after the election, there's likely to be openings on cemetery, parks, finance.
Concom.
Concom, well, that's on an elected position.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
For the health.
In a few other things.
More, yeah, more to health.
For the health, yeah.
How many, how many write-ins do you have to have in order to become elected?
More than, more than the next person.
Okay, so, somebody could just write in once?
Well, usually you coordinate with your spouse at home, and maybe your neighbor too, to make sure you get two or three people on that.
No, it has to be another once.
You get like three. You gotta write it in the same line.
We've been telling people to aim for five.
So, you gotta make sure they're all in the same line, cause if one writes it in this line for three years, and one writes it in this year for two years, now it's two different nominations.
Also, it should be name and the address.
Ah, gotcha.
Okay, it's all for future.
I, I guess my question is, you know, what, what are these positions, what are the roles and responsibilities for these?
Funny you should ask.
And how were they, you know, described, I think, maybe part of the issue is that, the access to this information. Uh, I try and go on the town website, and I, I do try and do due diligence on various items, and, uh, maybe I'm not looking hard enough, but, um, you know, certainly new to the, um, you know, public government space. But, uh, it, you know, hadn't, uh, you know, certainly not out of the question, but definitely wanna, you know, see where my strengths might apply, if, if possible.
So, so the funny you should ask was leading toward me saying that on June fourth, right before town meeting, there is going to be a boards and committees fair of sorts. Currently, we're having a little bit of a hard time getting people to sign up, but we're gonna get people to sign up, and there will be a boards and committees fair in addition to a storytime with Miss Tricia that will allow people to bring their children in to participate in their civic duty, while the kids are getting all sugared up and getting stickers and.
Send them home.
Yeah, hey, you know, at least you could go to town meeting and not have to worry, you know?[1778.02] Yeah, hey, you know, at least you could go to town meeting and not have to worry, you know?
Yeah, if you wanna give me a call, give me my card before we leave, and you can link up, and I'll let you know what's going on.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you have a specific interest, Ryan?
Uh, I mean, it, it hadn't necessarily crossed my mind until just, I don't know, but, uh.
Well, I think it turns up, for example, this isn't true about all the committees, but, like, if I give you an example of finance, for example,
With Whitney?
Yeah, it's happened.
Uh, it's an elected position, granted, but as far as what that requires in terms of your time, budget time is when they're very, they would be very busy, as we are. Uh, and we work hand in hand, we, when it's, we're trying to put the budget together, after you pass that, it's a general housekeeping, bills that come up, et cetera, but, things like that, it has its busy period, then after that, it's not, not like you'd be meeting every single week and like that.
Yeah, it's about. Four or five meetings a year.
Yeah. Peter was on it.
Yeah. There's not.
It's not a lot, four or five years.
Yeah.
But that's one, for example, that we absolutely have to be able to have, and right now, we can't even, they can't even meet, 'cause we don't have
Don't have any more to, to.
So they can't do any business.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, I wouldn't say my, my, uh, so my, my profession is in, um, you know, IT and, and computer software, but, uh, you know, I, I don't necessarily know too much about finance, but I would certainly do want to look at it, um.
You know how to pay bills, and you realize, like, when you're at home, I.
My wife does that.
Alright, so you gotta.
Okay, we got the wife, sign her up.
I do duly noted, I, I will certainly bring that back to her and, and we'll, uh, we'll look at it.
You must know math.
Well, all you need to do is just put her name out there publicly with her address, and we can get the write-ins for her.
Yes. Put it on how recent people, everybody will write her in, okay, fine.
Okay, appreciate that, really, very much, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for following up on that.
Okay, and all business, we just need a motion to table, 'cause, uh, Nate needs more time on the matter.
There's no new news.
I respectfully request more time, I have sent all of our questions to legal counsel, she has responded that she had received them, I have not received a answer as of six o'clock for this meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the existing host community agreement till whenever we hear back.
Okay.
Next, uh, second.
Motion made in second, any questions, discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion, motion carried, and, uh, yeah, item is tabled. And I'll leave it up to you to recommend when you wanna put it back.
Yeah, I'll keep it on there, just so that we.
Keep tabling it, great.
Okay, your TA report?
Alright, thank you very much, Mister Chair. So, this past week, the new town clerk, Mel Green, and I spent about two hours with the senior center reviewing the citizens guide to annual town meeting, it was awesome, like, there were about fifteen, twenty seniors, and they were all very, very engaged. It, like most meetings, I'm learning, Hubbard's, and it kinda went in a direction I didn't anticipate it going. But it was still well within the appropriate nature of the meeting, and we had some great talks. I'm hoping to do it before each town meeting, so that will be a lot of fun. We've re, we've released the comprehensive twenty twenty-three annual town report on our municipal operations, finances, and initiatives about two weeks ago, thank you to everyone that participated in that, with a big shout out to Tony for pulling it all together and managing that side of it. The photo contest ended up being a big success, we had about fifteen, twenty entrants, you guys remember that, you picked the photo a few meetings ago. So, I hope that that's something we will be able to do in the future. As I mentioned in the first, when I was talking about the senior center, I released the twenty twenty-four citizens guide to town meeting, which outlines the twenty-two articles, as well as a couple tidbits about town meeting history and what to expect at town meeting. Partnered with that is a very awkward video of me and only me talking about the, talking about all the articles. I'm hoping that by next year, Mel will be in a position where she can co-host it with me.
How many, how many dad jokes did you drop today?
None, no dad jokes, like.
Okay, just checking, okay.
But, it was, people have been utilizing this, I've gotten a number of comments, and it's been, it's been great. I mentioned it a little while ago, but we will be doing town meeting storytime, it was pretty funny how that came up. I was talking to Chris Monroe and Patricia, and kind of all at the same time, we all went, boom, town meeting storytime, let's do it. So, that's going to be happening during town meeting.
And who's gonna be helping her with that?
My guess. It has, we have reached out to Monty Tech and have commitments from two of the young children.
Okay.
Yeah, the ones that can't vote, one of them being your child babysitter anyway.
That's good.
Yes, they've been voluntold.
The problem is he knows where town meeting is.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
So he will redirect himself on a number of occasions.
Yeah, that's okay.
The quarter three financial report was released a couple weeks ago, all of our revenues are hitting right where they should be, and I'm expecting us to go over a little bit, thus creating some form of free cash for next year, so that will be very positive. Over the last few weeks, where there were, there was kind of a lull in meetings, last week there wasn't too many meetings, but there was a Public Safety Building Committee meeting, the week before that, we discussed the direction that the committee wants to go to in the future, and are currently thinking about that, I reached out to the property owner of sixty Gardner Road with some new information on how much an environmental study would cost, I'm waiting to hear back, I'm not one hundred percent sure where in the where on earth that man is right now, so I will give him a little bit more time than maybe I would others, because he may be traveling.
Yeah. Yep.
Kelly, our town accountant, visited a few days ago, she came down for a whole day and did a number of meetings with everybody to get some in-person time in, we also had a little pizza party, so that was, that was a good time, it was nice to see her.
I was here and I had to leave, they're like, do I have a pizza party, why don't you stay, I'm like, no, I gotta go.
They never called me either.
Who, who? Anybody else?
I was the shortcake party.
No, none of us, not for Scott, I'm fine, you know.
No, could look it up.
It was the senior shortcake thing, I missed it last.
Yeah, I didn't make it to that either. Been busy.
Yeah, staff, staff will be attending several trainings, uh, Melody is going to the two-day-long Mass Town Clerks Convention on the Cape the day after town meeting, so that should be an interesting couple days for her.
I swear she's going to the Cape.
The Bobby and Mary, the Treasure Collector's Office attended the Worcester County Treasure Collectors Meeting last week, they both had noted that they learned a lot over there, speaking of Mary, a press release will go out tomorrow, she finally received her formal collector's cer- certified collector's certificate, which is a very difficult test to take, and we are fortunate to have someone that had passed that at this time. We have, yes?
I wasn't talking to.
No, he's talking to me.
We have been collaborating with the Collin Center, working on that grant project, right now we've brought it down to website improvements, digitizing the permit process and public meeting management, which apparently Heather drove home so hard during her meeting with the Collin Center that it, it came up on our, on our priorities list.
Sorry. She, she did ask.
She did ask.
When you ask for input, you get it.
As mentioned earlier, a few months ago, due to limited capacity at the MRPC, I reached out to the rest of the RPCs, the Regional Planning Commission, asked.
RPAs.
RPAs, yeah, for assistance with grants, I thought it was going to be not fruitful, but then one of the, the CMRPC, the Central Mass Planning Commission, reached out and said, hey, you guys are a great candidate for an ADA grant, they then reached out to MRPC, received permission to work with us, so now I'm going to be working with CMRPC on updating our, on getting a grant to update our ADA plan that was last updated in two thousand and seven. I'm hoping to have more information on that in the coming weeks, it's a very early initiative.
But once you get that grant, then it opens you up, because they identify what your, your next grant things are, it makes it a lot easier to apply for the next round, the actual projects.
The plan for digital access is moving forward, I didn't, I didn't say the word.
Yeah, I would say, please, thank you.
Why is everybody looking at me?
'Cause it's the words that you have set about, we're moving on.
That triggers you.
That's moving forward, I should have a scope for that in the coming days. I would like to thank the DPW for clearing up many messes at Mount Jeff, the open space reached out, and
Oh, yeah, those big piles.
Yeah, and there was huge piles of rubble and trash and metal, and then DPW went up there and cleared it up.
No, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's from where the old foundation was, back there, the, they take out the old foundation, they took out the stuff that people fixed, or, oh, yeah, whatever.
Oh.
I've never been, I've never been in there, so.
They took out the non-stuff that wasn't supposed to be there.
How far from the road is it?
It's behind.
Behind the street park?
Like, the foundation, yeah, back there, you, yeah, and it's pulled, they pulled it all out.
Well, I have never been. Then they've been on the trails.
Oh, bu- oh, you've never been on the trails?
I have bad feet.
I ju-
Is it ADA accessible?
No, but across the street over Malone's, that one, that one's got ADA accessible.
Alright, rest in peace.
Within one day of being asked by Mister Hatch to look at it, Travis and his team had it cleaned up, so that's great.
Good.
I'd like to thank Jim, our town custodian, there was a
Mess.
crappy situation involving the, the toilets.
Can you, it's too clean at there.
And Jim dealt with that while we called the plumber, so special thank you to Jim.
I can't even. Poor Joe.
I will be participating in a twelve-week grant writing training, which is free. The head of the MMMA reached up two weeks ago, giving a little bit of information on this, and I applied, and I'm going to do that. So that starts this Thursday and goes through, I believe, August eighth.
Where is that located?
Online, online.
Oh, I wonder.
Yeah, so that should be good. On Wednesday, we will be closing for two hours for a grant-funded stress management training for staff, that'll be from ten to two.
Oh, it's so stressful, yeah.
There will be, there will be grinders.
Grinders.
Riding?
Not for you, not for you, not for me either.
And the annual town meeting is on June fourth. Uh, we are not having a meeting on June third, and may have a meeting right before the town meeting, if it is warranted. Jeff will be out of town, so I will speak with the vice chair on if that is needed or not. Other than that, that is all I have for this evening.
Thank, thank you. Any questions for, alright, um, policies to review, we don't have any? Okay, Matt is not anticipated. I also have one, but go ahead.
No, you go first.
Alright, this may be, uh, already taken care of, but, um, on Friday, uh, uh, one of the ladies, uh, next door called me in regards to the Memorial Day parade. I guess, you know, they're trying to put together not just for the people to organize the parade, but like a program, because this one's, they're gonna be honoring Tom Collier and so on, and they were curious in terms of the board would, because, uh, they were having difficulty reaching some of you, or, or not hearing back from me, whether you plan to attend, you plan to, uh, walk or ride in it, et cetera. So, i- if all of you have already been contacted, then this, as I said, this, I'm just bringing it up, because they probably would like to know one way the other, whether you can or can't. I will be there, um, so, are you riding with your, you've got some of your other groups?
I, I. No, I'm walking with the Girl Scouts, and I already, Sue already knows that.
She knows that, okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I responded last week, and I will have the fam.
You will, you what?
Have the whole fam, we'll have the.
So you'll be watching the parade, right?
No, 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 we're walking in, we'll have, we have a stroller slash wagon, we're good.
Oh, okay, alright. Alright, so I'll have confidence.
I responded the day I got the email, and I got a phone call from them, I'm telling you, and I told them I responded, but Susan's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you gonna walk?
I'm gonna walk right to Merrillman that weekend, yes, please.
Yeah, okay, so.
I'll be flying out for, uh, this Saturday.
Oh, oh, okay, alright.
So, no, not in the area, I'm out of state.
Okay, Chris, how about you?
Uh, I don't know yet.
Okay, well.
He could walk right next to us, we'll smile at him.
The whole fam.
Can I hop in the carriage?
No.
If you can, just let them know one way the other, okay, 'cause they know that they're trying to just, t- you know, do the right thing anyway, so.
I will, yeah.
And Nate already related to, but I was gonna save you, uh, the next f- uh, board meeting is June seventeenth. Unless you have to have something before the, uh, town meeting, uh, that's all I have.
Your turn.
So, go ahead.
So, I'm gonna go off course a little bit, 'cause I know you love it. Uh, all I wa- I wanna know is, our brine investment that we made, I wanna know comparison compared to the year prior to having that brine investment, what our cost was.
The roads.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I haven't heard anything about it since, I wanna just follow up on our investment to see how we did this year.
Of course. Good question.
Thank you.
For those at home, if pertains to the roads, we're not like doing the turkey.
Yeah, the liquid, the liquid they put down prior to a storm, it's called brine.
The pre-treatment, the pre-treatment, yeah.
Pre-treatment, yes.
I'll get some numbers on that, and then get back to you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just see where, 'cause I know they, you know, the gallon of water was much cheaper for Templeton Water and.
Well, what, what, I guess I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking for, what, what do you, what do you?
Prior to having the brine treatment, we, um, paid more per gallon of brine, okay, to mix, 'cause now we can mix our own brine in Templeton.
Well, our salt costs go- have gone down, and I'm gonna get you an exact number for that, 'cause now we don't need to utilize as much rock salts, because they are pre-treating the roads with a salt-based brine.
Well, right, but it has to do with brine also, because.
Are you talking about the, 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 the savings between when we used to have to buy the brine?
Yes.
Compared to what, when we produce it today ourselves?
Yes.
Or what putting the brine down on the roads saves our plowing budget?
All of the above.
Okay.
Which will be, yeah.
Okay, anything else, public first question?
Yeah, I got a few.
Or you have, excuse me?
Yes. Um, so I read the response from Legal about the pond question that I asked the other day. And it said, I read something, um, about designation of responsibility between the DCR and the town. And, um, I guess we have to be very clear that the town does absolut- the way I understand it, is we have to be very clear that the town does absolutely nothing up there to those properties, right, we don't pick up a bag of trash, we don't cut down a flower, we don't do anything up there. Otherwise, we can be sucked into a problem if there ever is one. Now, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That was my interpretation as well, with the exception of an emergency like last week, where the fire department had to go out in a boat and save a couple that had run out of gas.
So we don't do any maintenance or anything like that up there, to be clear?
No.
Okay. And then it said something about, she suggested that we should check our insurance provider to make sure that, um, everything is covered, I think it was a one hundred thousand dollar limit that.
We have at least, then I can show you the ins- the insurance that we get.
And the insurance is on board with having that as part of our coverage policy?
Yeah. We have much higher than that.
Okay.
It's just the town's general liability insurance.
Yeah, it's general liability.
Okay, um, that's it for that one, then, then, last week Jeff informed us that himself and Heather would be talking to the town administrator about a contract renewal. Is there a timeline or a process for that, and what input will the remaining three board members have in that process?
Despite what you do, it, uh, we, I, you wanna?
Yeah, you will have ultimate input, I had talked to, if my requests originally came out, we're about a year early, but with the finances the way they are, I'd rather get this kind of contract negotiations done early. But after a conversation, we're pretty much working on a draft that will be brought to the fi- full five-member board for review, for approval, for amendment. It, it's just, it, it takes that step out where everyone sits there and goes back and forth for days.
No, I, I, I understand, but, um, you know, I, maybe I misinterpreted what, I didn't misinterpret what Jeff said, but you're adding more color to it, so I, I didn't get the full impact of what he, he.
If you go back, I believe, two weeks ago on a Thursday, I sent out an email asking for that, for Jeff in his capacity as chair to name one or two or three, or he could have come back and said, hey, no, it's all five of us, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this for a month. And the timeframe on this starting was we had spoken about starting it when Jeff returns from his vacation.
So I guess I'll ask, Mister Chair, there will be a five-board member sit down before any final contract.
Yeah, uh, the intent is that the three of us will come up with first draft, you might call it, and comes, the board has the final say on everything, yeah, come to us, we'll pick it apart.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, and finally, I
Alright, and finally, I got a constituent complaint. Um, a couple of constituents' complaints about basketballs not being able to go through the basketball nets that are hanging on the backboards at Curtis Rec Field.
Were the nets tied together or they just?
Not sure.
Are the nets gone?
But the, um, complainees have to bring a broomstick if they wanna play basketball to get their basketball down after they make a basket.
I don't know if I understand that, but.
So, when the ball goes in, it usually slows the ball down to come out, well, this is stopping the ball from coming out, so the, either material has shrunk or it was ordered on Amazon, or.
They have big balls.
And then, and then there was a suggestion that maybe, um, steel nets would be a better solution. So if you can just send somebody up there to see if the basketball doesn't, you get stuck in the net, or if there's a non-issue, or if we have to replace the nets, or.
I will. So, as the town administrator that attended the Parks and Rec Committee meeting right before this one.
Yeah.
They're not exactly well-funded at this time, most of their accounts have a hundred and some change in it, but I will
Right.
make my way up there to look into that, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so.
Yeah, it was the first I heard of it the other day too, so I sent out last year's meeting.
Yeah.
Why don't we, uh, serving my constituency, go on Wednesday after the library tour.
There you go, see if, see if, bring a ball.
Bring a basketball.
Neither one of us can make the shot.
See if you're self.
Yeah, Peter, Peter can make the shot, how about you, I bet you.
Aye.
Mister Chairman.
Anything else?
If you can look into that and report back, that would be great.
That's a weird one, huh?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
There are many signatures.
Okay, lots of signatures.